So just to let you know at this point, you might want to text or email, but I will send the link.
Okay, and then it looks like Jessica, Tricia, are we missing one commissioner?
I just promoted David, so he should be on now.
Okay, so we got everybody from our side.
Jonathan, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you see me?
Um, I don't see you, but maybe you're on my other screen. I don't see you, David, no.
Okay.
Jessica, are we missing anybody else, or would you like to go ahead and get started?
Um, the only person I'm noticing we're missing is the applicant.
We can wait a couple of minutes and then we can get started, just in case she's logging in.
Thank you.
I need to reconnect and jump off.
Looks like Matt's back on, so.
Thank you.
Jonathan, can you see me now?
Let me see, maybe on my screen. Not yet.
Okay.
Coming in loud and clear, though.
Okay, good. There we go.
Yep, now we can see you.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the background put in, I apologize.
Okay. Jessica, should we go ahead and get started?
Um, we can go ahead and get started, the applicant still hasn't joined, so Matt Post, could you please try to reach out to him if possible in the next few minutes?
Sure will.
Thank you.
Great. We will now call our planning commission to order. Jessica, will you please perform a roll call?
Chairman Popiel.
Present.
Vice Chairman Amador.
Present.
Commissioner Anderson.
Present, good evening.
Commissioner Kamak.
Yes, I'm here.
And Commissioner Yost.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you all, also like to introduce members of staff that is here today. Jason Rogers, Community Development Director, Steve Timms, Planning Manager, Jennifer Jones, Principal Planner, Matt Hayder, Deputy City Attorney, Matt Prost, Planner, Tricia Mason, Community Development Manager, and Jessica Main, Administrative Specialist. Thank you for your presence today. Can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes from our last meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Can we call for a vote? Jessica will be upstanding since I was not present at the last meeting.
Commissioner Yost?
Yes.
Commissioner Kamak?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Amador?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, the motion has passed to the approval of minutes. Will the city please introduce our first case?
Good evening, or good late afternoon, I guess. The first case is S-752-20, Thompson Thrift is requesting a replat of Track A of Second Creek Village located at the northeast corner of Chambers Road and 104th Avenue into three lots designated for commercial use and one drainage tract currently zoned PUD planned unit development with commercial uses. Matt Post will be presenting the case on behalf of the city this evening.
Um, hello commissioners, thank you for being here this afternoon. Jessica, you've got your informational slide up, so we can switch screens.
Trying to figure that out right now, sorry about that. Is that better?
Yes, thank you so much. Okay, so this is case S-75219 that's rolled over into 20, this is a plot amendment, again for an amendment of Track A of Second Creek Village, which is at the northeast corner of Chambers Road and 104th Avenue. Jessica, next slide, please. Notice has been given to the public and it is on record, next slide. So again, this particular case is located in Second Creek Village, is part of the Second Creek Village PUD and is at the northeast corner of Chambers Road and 104th Avenue. The request is to replat Track A of Second Creek Village subdivision into three commercial lots and one drainage lot. Lot one of the proposed plat will include a .77 acre tract currently within the floodplain that is also currently under city ownership. The future land use of the entirety of the proposed replat is commercial, next slide. Here's a quick overview of the site and surroundings, you can see the prominent intersection at 104th and Chambers, and then the highlighted parcel that is adjacent to the Second Creek floodplain and currently developed or being developed lots, commercial lots directly north of 104th Avenue, next slide. The future land use plan, future land use map designates this area as commercial, it is also designated as a community commercial center, next slide. So the applicant is again requesting to replat Track A of the Second Creek Village subdivision into three commercial lots and one drainage lot. Lot one, which is slated for a commercial designation of the proposed plat will include that .77 acre tract that is within the floodplain and currently under city ownership. Ownership of that plat will be conveyed to the applicant via a city council resolution following a positive or a recommendation from the planning commission here tonight. The addition of the .77 acre parcel will allow vehicular access to Lot one from Chambers Road, so that the existing .77 acre parcel that is currently under city ownership is why we are bringing this in front of the commission, so that they are aware that there is a city-owned parcel that is almost completely entirely and wholly in the floodplain, being transferred to the applicant via that city council resolution, so that vehicular access can be provided from Chambers Road, next slide. So again, three new commercial lots will be created that will assist in the buildout of the Second Creek Marketplace Commercial Center. The anticipated user on Lot one, which is the lot that will absorb that city-owned property in the floodplain, will provide access from Chambers Road for that user into the entire commercial development that's there. So that access point will line up with a future access that is on the west side of Chambers Road, that is part of the proposed plans for Reunion Village Eight, we'll see that in later slides. That location, that access point will also include a traffic signal at a future date. And in order for the applicant or the proposed user to develop that .77 acre site, which will be part of a larger site, overall a Clomar F or Lomar will be required in addition to a floodplain permit to develop that, and of course the Clomar-Lomar application would be an official map revision made through FEMA to alter the 100-year floodplain. So again, this floodplain tract that is currently under city ownership will be conveyed via city council resolution, next slide. So a quick background on the subject property, the property was annexed to the city in 2002 and subsequently rezoned PUD. In 2006, a PUD zone amendment was completed and approved, creating Second Creek Village. In 2017, a plat consolidation created three tracks, that consisted of residential, commercial, and the Second Creek floodplain. At this time, the subject .77 acre floodplain tract was dedicated to the city at no cost. In 2018 and 2019, plat amendments included the creation of subject Track A and then commercial lots directly to the south of the subject site, that's where Gee's Tacos is located, Dutch Brothers Coffee, Brakes Plus. Next slide. There's a quick aerial, this aerial is from mid-March, so you can see the buildout occurring to the south of the subject site, you can clearly see the floodplain and then State House 38 in that same location, next slide. This is a depiction of the proposed plat, you can see the red highlighted parcel is specifically the city-owned parcel that will be conveyed via resolution. You can also clearly see the three commercial lots that will be created in addition to the drainage lot that is in the center. It's important to note as well that you can also see the 100-year floodplain boundary, and it shows that the lot to be conveyed is almost entirely again in that 100-year floodplain boundary, next slide. This is a proposed site plan for a proposed development on Lot one, the northeast corner of this particular site where that access road is, is that portion of floodplain city-owned land that we're discussing in this scenario. As you can see, the proposed user will be using that as access off of Chambers Road. Their proposal, now we have not officially accepted a development plan for review on this site yet, but this would be an example of what would be proposed there, and as you can see, there will be no buildings proposed in the floodplain, it will be ingress and egress to access only, they will have to meet Commerce City Land Development Code requirements to bring that ingress/egress out of the floodplain, in addition to floodplain development permit approval, a Clomar F or Lomar application depending on the decision the FEMA makes, and then also potentially a 404 permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. Again, all of those processes and requirements will need to be approved before development can occur on this lot. In that floodplain, again, only minor site improvements, so impervious surfacing, landscaping, and some minor site lighting as well would be permitted in that location, and again, that's the northwest corner of the site where the access road is. Next slide, please. Here is a depiction of future development, proposed future development of Reunion Village Eight, you can see 106th Avenue that comes across in that arrow where it depicts a full movement intersection directly to the east of that would be the access point that is being built by the applicant in the event that the track is successfully conveyed, so that will create a connected piece of property there, back and forth for users and residents in the area, and again, there will be a traffic signal at a future date installed at that location. Next slide. So just a quick overview of the development process in light of, for Lot one specifically, light of the floodplain, again, development lot will occur in conformance with LDC standards and federal regulations, a development plan and floodplain permit will be required, no portion of that building will be located within the floodplain boundary as we discussed and saw on the applicant's site plan proposal, and then a Clomar or Lomar application and approval with FEMA will be required to raise that portion of the property out of the floodplain, so that minor site improvements can occur. Next slide, please. The review will include, the floodplain review specifically, when FEMA review is initiated, it will include a review by local, state, and federal authorities to ensure that that proposal will not negatively impact floodplain boundaries in the area, cause disruptions in stream flow, or lead to buildup of debris or sediment in other areas of the floodplain that would impact downstream users. Upon completion of this process, the applicant would be permitted to utilize the area again for vehicular access, drive aisles, minor site improvements. Next slide. The development review team, through a comprehensive review process, found that the proposal is consistent with city adopted plans for the area, is consistent with approved, the approved PUD zone document implements the intent of the use classification and the specific zone district standards found in the Second Creek Village Zone document and the Commerce City Land Development Code, there is no evidence that the plat is violating any law, the general layout accomplishes the purpose and intent of the LDC, the plat creates lots that are in conformance with zone district standards, the Second Creek Village PUD zone document requires 20,000 square foot commercial lots, all three lots are well in excess of that. It should not create substantial or undue adverse effects, the lots are large enough and our provisions robust enough to ensure that that will not be the case. Adequate public services exist to serve this lot and are currently being installed, and then a development agreement has been executed for the site. Next slide, please. Again, public notice was provided for this process, postcards were mailed to adjacent property owners within 300 feet, there were 15 total, notice was placed in the Commerce City Sentinel, and four signs were placed on the subject property. At this time, there have been no requests or objections to this proposal. Next slide. Of course, this was as of July 15th, there were no objections, and as of July 21st at 4:47 PM, there are still no objections. Next slide. Given the presentation and the review provided by the development review team, the DRT recommends the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval. Next slide. So available to answer any questions you might have, and I would be happy to go in depth on what I know about the property.
Thank you, Mr. Post. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for him?
I just have a I have a comment more than a question, a traffic light that close to the corner of 104th and Chamber. Is a little, that's pretty close, that already gets real heavy traffic in there, even with active traffic, is that, you know, is that a plan, or, I mean, obviously it's a plan, but has that been looked at from how close it is to the other?
I believe it has, Commissioner, and that would be honestly our Public Works engineers would be best suited to answer that question. I can tell you that that's, that was talked about at length while we discuss this process here, but I think that that's a very good comment that we need to take into account, and I can take that to some of our engineers on staff, and they might be able to provide a more in-depth answer for you on that one.
Mr. Post, have you had any planetary conversations with FEMA and the Corps of Engineers and all those agencies that you've listed, see the feasibility of meeting their requirements?
The applicant has, yes, the applicant has hired Wright Water engineers, and they've worked with the Mile High Flood District in addition to our engineers here at the city, and they have started the process with FEMA, and FEMA is specifically requesting a Clomar F, which would be a map revision based on fill. The applicant at this point is in a holding position because they need a recorded plat to officially submit to FEMA, but we have had weekly calls with our engineers to work through some of the processes, specifically in regard to the LDC. I had mentioned it briefly in the presentation there, but we had an ingress/egress access issue where our land development code specifically prohibits ingress/egress access in the floodplain. Of course, their fill and revision at that location will bring them out of the floodplain, but from the conversations that we've had and the responses from our engineers, the applicants are well on their way to processing and developing that FEMA application appropriately. Of course, you know, we will, depending on FEMA comments, transfer those over to the development plan review, again, we have not accepted development plan review for this site specifically because of the floodplain implications, so we're actively working with them right now to get that addressed.
Okay, that's good to know that they've gotten ahead of that, so. Any other further questions for Mr. Post and the commissioners? Do you know?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just to elaborate on Commissioner Kamak's questions about the signal, when we plotted the King Supers development across the street, there was always intended to be a future false signalized intersection north, so it's actually the entrance on 106th is actually plotted, it's just not constructed on the other side of that kind of that masonry wall that's behind King Supers, and that's going to lead into their Village Eight, it won't be the only access, but it will be one of them for another, you know, five or 600 lots, but yes, at that time, engineering looked and saw where the appropriate level of distance was from Chambers, I'm sorry, from 104th, and determined that that was the furthest north without them going into the actual Second Creek channel, so that's how that was determined.
Thanks, Steve, thanks for that clarification. Do we know if the applicant is on the line and would like to say anything?
It does not appear the applicant is online.
Okay.
I have a question, Jonathan.
Oh, sure, go.
So this .77 acres is floodplain now, it's going to be turned into what looks like parking and a road, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, that site will be primarily a road there, yes, the majority of that .77 acre site will be access road.
Okay, well, it's always been my experience that asphalt tends to drain quite a bit of water as opposed to landscaped areas. Is there a plan to put that into Second Creek or a retention pond or anything like that?
There is, yes, so part of this replat will include the creation of a detention and water quality pond, and that will be located in the center of that development, so our engineers will ensure that any drainage that occurs on that site will occur into that drainage pond before it drains into Second Creek, so.
Now, another question, will they have rights to the water in Second Creek?
You know, I can't answer that one for you now, but I can absolutely look into that for you, Commissioner Yost, and figure it out for you, but I would assume that they've hammered that out already, if there's another individual online that might.
Yeah, the water rights associated with the property would not change, so the development would not get those water rights if there were any on that Second Creek area.
Gotcha, thank you. Um, one more question, and I can't remember what it is, so we've got an entrance off of Chambers going east, it's right by the Sherman Williams, and then we're going to build another entrance off of Chambers north of that, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, okay.
And that will be, and again, this access will, or this road will provide access to potential future commercial development that we are replating now, so again, we're creating two more, three commercial lots in total, of course, Lot one is the hot topic at the moment because of the floodplain, but there are two more large commercial lots being replatted with this proposal.
Will the first entrance off of Chambers, the one by Sherman Williams, will that access road also give you access to these two new plots?
It will, yes, there will be a full circulation access, yes.
Good, good. I have no more questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Yost. I'm assuming the applicant is not still, has not joined the line yet, Mr. Post?
It doesn't look like it, he was passed on the invite and confirmed that he would be here today, but it looks like he's not.
Thank you. Jessica, it does not sound like anybody registered to speak at today's commission meeting, can you confirm, was there any public comment today?
I can confirm there is no public on the meeting today.
Can I get a motion for the case?
I'll make the motion, I move that commission enter a finding that the requested final plat for the property located at the northeast corner of Chambers Road and 104th Avenue contained in case S-752-20 meets the criteria of the land development code, and based upon such findings, recommend that the city council approve the final plat.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion from the commissioners, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. If I can remember what it was, oh, what type of businesses do they plan on? Are these retail, or do we know?
Well, as of now, Commissioner, I know that they have a proposed user on Lot one that will be a daycare facility.
Okay.
So again, there has been no official development plan submitted for that site, but I know that that would be the interest that the developer is finding there.
Is there a, is there like a set definition of what types of businesses can be in there?
Yes, yes, there sure are, there are, again, that Second Creek Village PUD highlights the allowed commercial uses that would be permitted to go there, yes.
Gotcha.
So if I may, just like as Mr. Post stated, the land uses are dictated by the PUD, but it would also, we have a motion on before us right now with a second, so we're looking for discussion on the motion as opposed to additional questions and stuff.
I got it, I got it, thank you, I'll retract my question.
There is no, there's no discussion between the commissioners, we could call for a vote?
I do just have one thing, Chairman Popiel, hearing the back and forth, the way that the land has been, I'm going to call it deeded back and forth, and knowing that it's really hard with the ditch company, if that makes sense, and the use of the land to be able to develop on it would nearly be impossible, hearing those things, I'm, will be in favor of voting for this.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Amador. Any further discussion? Ms. Main, can you please go for a call for a vote around?
Commissioner Yost?
Yes.
Commissioner Kamak? Commissioner Kamak? Commissioner Kamak, I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Still couldn't hear you. Looks like you're muted. No, you're not muted, yeah.
Yeah?
There we go. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Amador?
Yes.
Chairman Popiel?
Yes. The motion has passed, five yeses, zero nos. Thank you, Mr. Post, for presenting the case and staff.
Thank you.
With now further cases, we're going to move to any commission business that needs to get discussed, any commissioning business? Commissioners? Matt, any attorney business that we need to discuss today?
None this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Any staff business that we need to discuss?
Um, just that we are going to try and, and, uh, move, uh, planning commission back to our regular, you know, first Tuesday of the month, even though they're still technically special or emergency meetings, um, we're going to try and, and do that, so we will have two items, uh, for the August fourth, uh, meeting, so, um, on the agenda, so look forward to that.
Do we expect one of those to be the oil and gas, Steve, or no?
Uh, they will not be oil and gas related, no.
Okay. Thank you, our meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.